Everybody's attention. We'll start our meeting, call our meeting to order, and first thing is to ask for approval for the agenda tonight.
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
You have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next on the agenda, it was just approved, is the pledge of allegiance. We have with us fourth grade student John Mabel, who has been practicing and is going to, it isn't her pledge, if you all will stand.
The line of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and ever so long.
Thank you, John. We'll move on to the consent agenda and ask for a motion for approval on the consent agenda.
Move for adoption of the consent agenda.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we have that. And we move on to our student advisory report.
Good afternoon, my name's Clara and I'm here with student advisory. Twenty-three days until graduation, so we move by bye. Prom will be held this Saturday, April 27th. The theme is a Midsummer Night's Dream. On the sports section, there are a lot of sporting events going on this week. Please take a look at the sports section and make plans to cheer on the pioneers. School news, there are a few days left to support Project Graduation. From Tia Metley and Whitney Dyer from Prom Shop, as of today, the Prom Shop has assisted twenty-three girls in getting prom ready. From Leah Simpson Minority Liaison, a group of students will be going to Morrison Industries, Ben Loment, and River Park Hospital for Career Exploration Day, or George, sorry. So far, our minority students have ranked in over one-hundred-and-ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty a year in scholarship money from various institutions. This number continues to grow daily. From Lori DeArmond, Special Education Teacher and Special Olympics Coach, WCHS has been nominated to be an ESPN Unified Champion School. This is based on inclusion, leadership, and sportsmanship. From Rachel McGee Art Department, each spring, the Congressional Institute sponsors a Nation One High School Visual Art Competition to recognize and encourage artistic talent in the nation and in each congressional district. The following WCHS students have been selected as top ten finalists in this year's Congressional Art Contest. James Ward, Maritza Martinez, Chrissy Anantaveros, Jason Grant, and Hope Jeffrey. From Debbie Jennings Scholarship Coordinator, Senior Awards and Scholarship Day is this Friday, April 26th. Totals are approximately, from local scholarship, it's one-hundred-and-ninety thousand. A Hope Scholarship is one million two-hundred-and-twenty-two, yeah. I'm sorry. One million two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. From college or university, it's two million ninety-four thousand. And scholarships being awarded total is three million five-hundred-and-four thousand. Way to go to WCHS Plaza, 2019. Construction has started on the Special Education Budget Room oning. From Connie Bell, FCCLA, the Five-Eight FCCLA Class Club completed a service project titled Be The First on Thursday, April 18th. This class campaigned to be the first tobacco pre-generation. Students signed a petition calling on the FDA to end the sale of flavored tobacco products and pledged to not use such products. From Patty Smith, NHS, the Warren County High School Chapter of the National Honor Society held in Dutchess on Friday, April 12th. Congratulations on all who were in Dutchess. Thank you.
Alright, and we move on to recognitions now.
Okay. I did this. Okay. Hello, I'm Mary Payne, I'm a teacher at Warren County Middle School. And I have nominated these two wonderful ladies. This is Ms. Charlotte Mulligan, she is my right-hand sister in my classroom. And this is Ms. Lynette McKinley, sixth grade science teacher in the Navigators. Ms. McKinley is absolutely fabulous with my special ed kiddos. She, they cannot wait to get to her science class. I'm gonna tear up here in a minute. She does all kinds of wonderful hands-on stuff with the kids. And like I said, they can't wait to get there. One of my students made the highest grade being weatherman in her classroom. So, and like I said, they cannot wait to get to her class. So, this is for you, Ms. McKinley. And like I said, this is my right-hand sister. We, this is my assistant in my classroom. And it's like we read each other's mind. And if I need something, I know where to go. If she needs something, she knows where to go. So, we work extremely well together. And I'm so privileged to have her as my sister. So, this is in honor of you, Ms. Charlotte Mulligan.
Thank you.
So, I couldn't live without her in my classroom. We do lots of fun stuff with our kiddos too. So, thanks, Lynette.
My brothers really deserve it.
And I think y'all deserve it. You did a great job.
Thank you.
One other one. And this was, I think, one of your last ones in March. Megan couldn't be here. So, this is Megan Higgins Peagerum, is that right?
Megan Peagerum, I was just thinking, yeah.
Yeah, I know. I was gonna go with the whole, the whole thing. So, I don't know if you've seen this or not.
No, I haven't.
Okay, well, this is good then. Well, we're glad to have you and thank you for the job you do. But this, you were nominated by Kelly Casey, one of your students' parents, I believe. And I wanted to read what she said. She said, "I would like to nominate this teacher because she has always went above and beyond what was expected of her. She has a special name for her class, and each year, we give them a shirt with all of their names on it. If a parent needs to get in touch with her, she is very easy to reach and is right back in touch with them ASAP. She is always very understanding. My little girl is in her class this year, and she absolutely loves going to school every day just because she gets to spend time with her. My little girl is also very sick around Halloween and missed about a week of school, and Ms. Megan was the first to message me and check on her. She pushes her students to do their very best. She is the ideal teacher, and I want my kids to have her every year." So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
The TSBA Board of Distinction Award for Warren County Board of Education. Wishing to spotlight outstanding board performance, the Tennessee School Boys Association created its Board of Distinction program to recognize the highest standards of performance by a board as a whole. This award, one of TSBA's most prestigious, celebrates achievements of those boards that have met the challenge of leadership in every area of their board responsibility. To be designated as a Board of Distinction, a school board must meet specific requirements in four key areas: planning, policy, promotion, and board development. These areas include such elements as creating five-year plans, reviewing and maintaining the policy manual, participating in TSBA district and state meetings, conducting a self-evaluation, and achieving, maintaining necessary board level for each member. As requirements are extensive, not every board qualifies as a Board of Distinction. Our board is among those select few. On behalf of the Tennessee School Boys Association, I am proud to present the Board of Distinction Award to the Warren County Board of Education. Congratulations to each of you, to the board as a whole.
Good job. You need to all dressed up and everything.
Always, you have to get a picture or, you know, we need to get a picture. Sure. When she gets back in here, we'll have to.
And our old Helen was able to present this because she is a member of the Tennessee School Board Association. So, she is representing us on a state level. We're very proud of her.
Thank you.
Very proud of her. We're gonna picture now?
Yeah, I think so.
Helen?
I'm getting.
Uh, Board of Distinction.
Oh!
We are, we are distinction.
I pulled double duty today.
Okay. One, two, three. One, two. Oh, you guys caused me some. Thank you. Got it? Yes.
Don't let the plaque of hell is on my teeth. We do have one more. Okay. We got all of our pipeline focused.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So, all, let me first say that all of that was hard to follow, from the, from the last comment to the other really great recognitions we had tonight. But I'm here to present certificates to our principal pipeline fellows for this year. But before I do that, I want to tell you, number one, it's been a really great, great day for our Principal Pipeline Program here in Warren County. Because Bobby and I got to go to Nashville today to share with TDOE leadership in the Teachers and Leaders Program, and also the other principal pipeline programs throughout the state. I think there's maybe six, six of them throughout the state, about what we've been doing in our collaborative, not only in Warren County, but with the other partner districts that we have. So, we have celebrated our work today on the state level, and now we're here to celebrate the people who really do the work and have done so much in our Principal Pipeline Program this year. As you might remember, we had our first cohort start last year. So, we have another group of fellows who are in their second year of work. But we're here to recognize our second group of fellows who have been in the Principal Pipeline Program this year. They've learned about lots of different things. They've taken on lots of different leadership activities. They've met three times this year in a collaborative with six other districts, and a nationally-recognized principal development expert, Dr. Mike Rutherford. And they've met with him, and they've worked on their skills for observation in classroom, keenly observing what goes on, and picking those things that can really grow a teacher, and then providing feedback to teachers on those things. And I'd say probably they have found opportunities to use that, not only with their students, but hopefully with some of their peers as well, as they all are leaders in their current positions. We've also met with them on a monthly basis here, for two hours after school every month, and we focused on things like our PLC culture, our literacy work, you know, things that all principals must know, like budgeting and equity aspects in special ed. We've had our principals present to them, we've had our supervisors here present to them. So, they've kind of been, we say this often in education, but they've been drinking from a fire hose. But they've done it well, and we're so proud of all five of them. So, with all that, I'll go ahead and present the certificates. We have Stephanie Davis. Jacob Dunn.
Appreciate.
Anna Heasley. Tamara Martin. And Tia Meddick. And I probably should have let Bobby say anything if he wanted to say anything better.
I think you said it. But no, they have, they've done a great job on them. And Betty Wood has been involved with them each month and have done an outstanding job. And, you know, I can't say anything more than what, what she's already said. And we got to highlight, you know, what we've done over the past couple of years with Cohort One and Cohort Two. And, you know, now, they're still in the pipeline, so they'll still have another two-year commitment that we're gonna try to embed some activities with them and continue to help them grow and, you know, one day be an administrator, you know, in our district. And, you know, see what administration's all about. That's one of the things that we really wanted to do when the pipeline grant came about was, you know, be able to have a cohort of eleven now, prospective principals to choose from, but not just to, you know, throw them into the principalship, you know, right out of the classroom, but give them an opportunity to see kind of what it's like, to ask questions, to be in different buildings. And, you know, for the high school folks to be in elementary schools, and that's, that's what has happened with our Cohort One. We've tried to give them ten days that they've gone into different schools with a different principal to see what the day-to-day operation looks like. And, and these folks will, will do the same in the next couple of years. And we're gonna try to continue to grow, grow them. And we're looking at, with some of our grant funds, a company called McGrill, who does a lot of professional development work that we can bring in, and try to really make that a really deep experience, all in for Cohort One, but for Cohort Two as well, and all our pipeline folks. So, that's been great. All of them has done a great job, Betty's done a great job, and we're pleased that you all allowed us to do that, so. Lots of recognition. We're doing good stuff here all the way around. Lot of good stuff going on. Let's, we'll move on to our operations report. Okay. In your packet, every year, we have to get our federal consolidated funding application done a little bit early so that we can send that to the State Department for their approval. And Vicky Dodd has worked on that. It's in your packet. We did receive some cuts this year, but overall, we were in a, we did get a little bit more money. There are some guideline rule changes. One of the biggest rule changes was with our, I think, I hope you know in our project update, but are not consolidated, but class size reduction. Teachers, they changed the guidelines on those. So, we're gonna have to move those over into GP. We won't be able to fund those in the consolidated application. But, you know, good news is that we did have a cut in Title Two, which is our Professional Development Funds, which is where that comes from. So, that enabled us to, you know, increase our professional development money there. So, you know, as you know, consolidated funding and federal funding is really money in, money out. We could, we have to go by the, you know, by the State Department's rules. And so, Vicky's developed that application per those rules. You know, we could still get a, you know, a cut, you know, from federal government that comes through the state to us. But this is, this is what we have at the present. So, Vicky, have you got anything further really on, on that?
As far as the cuts, we don't know when they come until we come to work that morning and we log on. But keep your fingers crossed.
That's right. We try not to log on. So, we will need approval from the board if everybody's okay with that. I think it looks great, you know, from our perspective, and we'll send that up to the State Department, and then they'll, they'll give us their perspective on it too. If we have to make changes, we can bring that back, so.
And this is for the general federal funds application?
This is, this is for the consolidate application, all of our federal funds. So, all titles, special ed, Title One, Title Two, Title Three, Four, Five. And we've also applied for.
IDEA.
IDEA Part B and McKinney-Vento.
Well, I'll move for adoption of the consolidated federal funds application.
Alright, we have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright.
I would, Mr. Chairman, if Ms. Dodd can hold on, and later in the other businesses needed, we'd like to have a little discussion of our Warren County Counts.
Yes, sir.
The census. And Ms. Dodd's taking the lead, is representing Warren County School System and that. So, if you can hold on, that would be great.
I can.
Thank you. We'll drop down, if you don't care, Mr. Chairman, down to the federal programs budget resolution. And that resolution is done annually and provided to the county commission. And really what that says is that county commission does not approve the federal budget because the federal government approves the federal budget. And we send that in annually to them for their approval. So, the board approves that, and we'll send that over to Mr. Haley's office and run that through the next commission. So, we just need approval on that, if everybody's good with that.
The motion that we send the annual federal programs budget resolution over to the Executive's Office for approval.
Alright, we have a motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussions or questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, the last item that I have is just the UT River Friendly Landscape Project. This is for affecting Bobby Ray Elementary. We were approached by University of Tennessee and the city of McMenville in looking at the area behind the football field that is owned by Warren County Schools, and is not necessarily a wetland area, but it is a wet area. And, you know.
John boats out there in flood.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there was a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of that probably too. But the, you know, they approached us about this. I asked them to go and talk with Monty, I think, which they did. And they provided us the application for the project. It's really a grant project. And what they would do is, we would provide some minimal assistance, some, you know, light, dirt work, things of that type. And then they would turn that into a garden area. It would be kind of a wetland garden area to kind of beautify the campus and allow, you know, students to visit and, you know, upkeep and things of that type. We have reviewed it. We sent, I sent back some questions to the project lead, which we've not heard back from yet. Basically, you can see in there, I think there's a portion that's listed as our part, which is like forty-four thousand dollars, which they said that we would not, that was not our part. So, I'm getting clarification on the proposal. So, provided that we do not have any financial interest in the project, and they don't have to provide any funding, and it's fully grant funds, then I think it would be a, a great opportunity.
Is this one-year plan? What happens if?
It's a one-year, one-year grant, and then we would have to kind of upkeep, you know, that as, as we go along. And, you know, I think some of, you know, schools and students and things of that type would kind of upkeep that and.
So, they're like, sort of just get started?
Yes. Well, no, yes. I think it would, you know, be of benefit. I think Monty talked about, and she spoke herself, would really want to do something with that. Maybe, kind of like what Dibble did with the garden area, maybe at some point, and things of that type. So, any, anything you've got, any more?
It would be a wetland, the, the area that they're talking about developing. And so, there've been a couple people from UT that have visited, and you can actually see where they have put up flags, similar to like the little gas flags. And there would be a walkway out in, already there, he found a snapping turtle that is living there. He said that with some of the things that they would plant, he felt like we would probably draw monarch butterflies. And he had done a similar project next to the interstate in Crossville that they are now seeing bald eagles. And so, he mentioned that that might be something that we would see in the future. And then we had hoped, we've got some teachers that are interested in developing our vegetable garden. So, he gave us some ideas and some information about that, and said that when he came, just kind of as a freebie, he would give us some advice for that, some probably raised beds.
And I did get a phone call from the gentleman today, and I did not get a chance to return his call, but they're, you know, interested in kind of starting. So, that's why we wanted to try to get board approval tonight for it. And like I said, as long as we don't have any financial obligation, you know, I'm fine, Monty's fine.
If it's approved now, one of the, the issues about approving it now was that he would like to do it before school is out so that we can use the children to help do some of the planting. And then they would also have a, I believe a Saturday, I'm not positive about that. But one aspect for them is with the nursery room, that they would have a horticulture and a landscaping class, I think, that they would offer to some of those people to come in and see how they do some things.
Mr. Chairman, I think for all the right reasons, we should join in this collaboration with the UT Institute of Agroecology on this collaboration on the demonstration wetland project, joining Bobby Ray Elementary School. And we would adopt.
Provided, man, I said, provided no cost.
Well, we're gonna have some ongoing after that first year after grant, as Bobby said, we're gonna have some maintenance cost. Yes, it definitely should be maintained, but I can't imagine that's gonna be anything extensive.
Yeah, no initial cost.
Yeah, no initial cost.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. I do love things that come that don't cost any money. And it improve the system, so I wonder. So, we'll, we'll move forward with that.
This could be kind of an outdoor learning laboratory. I think that's, that's great, Ms. Hillis, that your students, of course, it would be available to others.
Sure. Other students throughout. Yeah, and hopefully improve that area a little bit for the community too, in the city, so. Kind of a win-win.
Yep.
Anything else on operations? Ms. Dodd was gonna talk a little bit about the census. Alright.
Um, we, last week, was contacted to represent Warren County Schools in the Complete Count Meeting, meeting. Ms. Anderson was there, Mr. Zegman, County Executive Haley, and myself, and a whole group of Warren County citizens. Warren County Schools is gonna become very involved in the census 2020. It, it has the potential, if we can get Warren County to count, and that happens to be our new hashtag, Warren Counts, to, of course, support federal funding. The census is tied to six-hundred-and-seventy-five billion dollars of federal dollars in the United States. So, it's very important for us to become involved. Not that it'll bring any more money, but we sure don't want to lose what we have. And we can, you know, if we count everybody, you can take that opportunity maybe to receive more. Right now, through December, we're considering that the educational phase of the program, where we're learning the program, and we're learning how to get our word out. We're having the planning committee meeting once a month. Then, the awareness phase begins in January, where we'll begin to make our public involved. The materials, I believe, unless I'm incorrect, are free to us. We just have to.
We just have to get the requests out and, and we're learning more every day as things become available. They're just starting to become available. There's a motivation phase where I'll have to hit the ground running with parents here. Couple of ideas that are al- already brewing, you know, parent-teacher conference nights because this census can be done not just by mail, but also online. So that'll be time we get things like that going. We even giggled about if we could figure out a way to reward our kids if, through giving them their rewards at each school or bringing in some kind of a document where they've completed the census. So it, it is a rollout in August when school starts back. There's lesson plans that are going to be furnished to us. I'll be getting those out to everybody. It's, we just really need to educate our public and of course, that's our business. So we're going to help with getting the, the public educated on the importance of completing that document because so many times that document just gets thrown away and they need to see that document is tied to federal dollars. So the census has hit the ground running. April will be census awareness and we want everybody to complete the census. And every month I'll try to tell you what we've done in Warren County Schools to, to reach the goal of 100% in our county. That's lofty. But, you know, there's, it's all totally secure documents that go back. There, there's no arrests made because you, there are no deportations made, there's nothing like that. We want to count every citizen in Warren County because it's going to help Tennessee and it's going to help Warren County. So we're working on it.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of real quick observations. I was elated to see the, the big turnout and the enthusiastic turnout. Ms. Anderson was there, of course, Ms. Dodd at the, at the meeting, was it last week, Ms. Haley?
Yes.
Okay. But an organizational meeting for what I would call is that the Warren Counts full sense, whatever you call it.
Complete Count Committee, Warren County Complete Count.
Okay. And, and these are community leaders, representatives from government agencies and the business community who are pushing for full compliance in Warren County. The, the other thing to note is that this is really economic Darwinism because the federal government divides up our tax dollars based on a population formula. And if we don't get our fair share, what we leave on the table goes to other communities. We don't get the benefit of it. Tax money, federal tax dollars that are generated in Warren County, they go elsewhere. So I, I think we just need to impress on, on our citizens in Warren County that nobody's going to save us in this thing other than we ourselves.
I think we only had an 82% return rate in 2010.
Eighty-two percent. So 18%, the 18% who didn't show up, that, they, they were basically sending money to other communities, basically what happened. Am I right about that?
Eighteen percent was the return rate and they got a few more back to the door to door and a few other things, but we were undercounted and so we don't want that to happen again.
We were, yeah, we were under-
Representation in Congress and in the General Assembly all is based upon population numbers and the representative districts, even in Warren County, for the 12 mission districts will also be based upon population changes.
Right, exactly. This census affects a lot of things and it's required by the U.S. Constitution. And this is one thing that the federal government has to do, that and pass a budget. Those are two things that, that the federal government has to do. The issue, and I'm glad Ms. Dodd mentioned that, that this is not a cover for ICE. There's nobody that's going to come along and use the census data to try to cause any deportations or anything like that. That's not going to happen under law. Very serious federal law that those, those census returns are held in strictest confidence. So they cannot be used in any way to invade anybody's home and carry anybody off. That cannot happen. The, the issue that we're facing today that complicates our situation here in Warren County, the, in the U.S. Supreme Court, the oral arguments proceeded today on the proposal by the Commerce Department, which oversees the census, to include the citizenship question. This hasn't been done before. And I think people who are concerned about a full count, particularly in communities that have significant immigrant populations, is that this will be a deterrent. This will create fear and distrust in communities. The veteran court watchers today said that it's not looking good for the home team, judging from the questions and the action in the Supreme Court today, which means that the citizenship question may go forward, which will be a big negative for Warren County. But this, this decision's being made in the U.S. Supreme Court way above my pay grade. But if that's the case, we have to live with it and do the best we can. So that, that's our situation and we'll have to make the best of it.
All right. Thank you, Bill, Vicky, for, all of you for your hard work on counting. Getting ready to count.
Got all the count.
Just a couple, a couple additions on other business. One, testing update, everything seems to be moving pretty smoothly with testing. Online at high school has gone tremendously better. So knock on wood, we hope that continues. So we should have another week and be complete and then we'll see how the data is brought back to us and things of that type. But compared to this year, it's definitely one eighty, you know, as far as being able to get on and test and just a few minor, you know, little glitches that have gone on, but much better. Budget timeline, I talked with Mr. Haley earlier this week and talked with Mr. Cotton today, as a matter of fact, on budget. And we hope to have our budget, Mary Jennifer's working on that. She's down to salary estimates at the present. And then she's going to a national conference next week. So I talked to Mr. Cotton. Hopefully we will have the budget ready to send out to you for viewing by Friday, the 10th of May, hopefully before that. I would like to see if we could have a call meeting, Mr. Chairman, on the 13th, which is Monday. If that's, if we can, on that date and then present it to the county commission on Tuesday, the 14th. So that we'll be able to, I think they're waiting on us and a couple of the budgets to pull everything together.
There's a few more budgets, but we're going to try to get everything through. Any questions for July 1st? So that's what the state asked us to do and that's what we're going to try to do for the first time in a while.
That will be a first.
So we're working diligently.
That would be a first.
So if that, if we-
It's Monday, May?
Thirteen.
May 13th.
Five.
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 Unless something changes where, that's also the same night of our pre-K kindergarten meeting as well. So we might need to adjust that time maybe to six or, you know, a little after, somewhere along in there. But if that works for everybody, if it doesn't, then we can adjust as needed. But would like to see if we could get it approval up board and sent to the county commission that week.
We've got a school board meeting that week also.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
We've moved that up.
Yeah. So we might, yeah, be able to, I'd really get it to them. I'd hate to have another meeting, but we do need to get it to them as quickly as we can.
The regular meeting is that week?
Sixteenth or fifteenth, yes. Sixteenth.
Sixteenth. Well, then we just have our reading on the 13th, full meeting.
Well, we could possibly do that or Tuesday, the 14th, and then present it to them on Thursday. I don't know if that's, causes anybody any hardship. Okay, okay. Thirteen.
Thirteen, that's a good lucky number.
Okay.
Lucky the thirteen.
So just have the whole meeting called the thirteen?
I mean, will that work for everybody or is that a problem?
The only thing needed, that might be running late because I've got to be at TSBA that thing.
Oh, okay. Well, if we bump it back to six o'clock, that give you time to get here and we've got a, I need probably making a appearance at the kindergarten opening. So if we could do the 13th at six.
And one meeting.
All set?
Thirteenth at six and then we won't have the meeting on that Thursday. And we'll, we'll get the budget and everything ready to go by then.
So this includes the monthly meeting?
Yes, yes. That'd be good. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
A little on.
All right. All right. And then just one note, you may have seen today that the Educational Savings Account bill passed the House. So it'll be on to the Senate in some form or fashion. You know, we'll, we'll adjust. Like I said, it won't, it won't affect us for, you know, right now, but I met with our legislators, actually I went to Nashville yesterday and met with Joseph Williams, who is the External Affairs Staff Member for the Governor. And, you know, told him our, our feelings on that and, you know, I just told, relayed, you know, if I, just told my, my words were if I was a legislator and I had to vote today, I don't know. But if it's going to pass, then it needs to be fair for all. So everybody needs to have a level playing field and, you know, hopefully we'll see where that lands. But that's, that's kind of disappointing, you know, to see that. But like I said, we, we need to continue to monitor and, you know, be heard on that topic. And like I said, it has to go through the Senate as well and we'll see, see where we are. You know, that's, I just wanted to bring you up today if you've not seen that today.
We still schedule for board retreat May 7.
Yes. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Well, nothing on the curriculum and achievement. I was going to give you some time, Bill, to speak on any subject.
I'm glad to say this is the first time in recent memory that we haven't had some policy actions, so.
We will again soon.
Well, this is something I'll wish.
We had a day, we had a day to say our day segment for it this year.
We'll move on to the legislative.
The legislature's adjourned, we'll have a while.
Okay. End of facilities meeting. Alan talked about the progress at Bobby Ray, it's moving very, very well. He said the roof should start this Thursday, weather providing, that the plumbing and the wiring is being done and hopefully by, it'll be, the roof will be under roof by next week. Also, the, we had a couple of funding things. Well, we had one change order to extend the days of FTM construction to, for 28 days to, which would be in the 29th of August, 2019, and I'll make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second?
A second.
All right. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Also from the funding allowance, they had, had requested that they spend the money for the additional shaft elevator bracing of a total of $3,887.53 and also for a waterline relocation. And that total was $4,323.24, which made a total to be spent out of the allowance of And that would leave a number allowance balance of $12,708.29. Can I make that motion?
All right. We have a motion. Do you have a second?
Sir.
All right. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right.
He also said that at West, maybe the building permit would be ready by Monday. Also, maybe there's some equipment will be moving in next week for the West project. We did also hear that the security finishing at Devo was completed and the finishing would be completed at the rest of the schools at the end of the school year. Also that we had, the Keno Opit Warren County High School is underway, being completed. And also we had a sheet given to us by, from the ESG project update, which we were considerably happy with to see that the majority of that has been completed. And I think that concludes the facilities report.
Mr. Chairman? All right. All right. Thank you, James. And any other committee reports?
This is not a committee report, but I would just like for people to know about the savings so far we've had at Devo and the lighting situation.
Yes.
That's very good to know.
Yeah. And that's, that's one school out of-
One school out of 12, 12 buildings, 13 buildings. Countless influence.
We've, we scored month over month compared to the base year, April of 2017. Compared to April 2019, we, we've already banked savings of $2,854. And if you extrapolate that over a year, you're talking about $34,000 in hard dollar savings. And that's just getting started.
That's just getting started.
That's just based on the lighting, reference point, the LED lighting.
Awesome.
I've got something. The director's evaluation is due. Instructions are on the front. They're going to be due May the 3rd. And you can get that back to me through email or at my office and I'll just test those out. And if you would like to fax them to me, just call me and I'll give you the fax.
Thank you.
One of our major jobs as school board member, so.
And Miss Fanny did a good job getting it ready. Obviously does a good job. Very perfect.
Okay. Anything else, Jim? Motion to adjourn?
No.
Robotics.
Oh, yeah. Robotics, the Hoot Robotics Center will open Friday. Well, it's, the grand opening is on Friday. Ground, not groundbreaking, groundbreaking for the hotel across the street, but for the Robotics Center, the grand opening is Friday at 11 o'clock.
I think you're sorry to have the big thing.
Yeah. So that'll be a big thing. I can see that.
Yes. Doma arigato, Mr. Robotics. We have a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
Set flag connected.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Right.